This conference will now be recorded.
I'm Acting Chair Susan Cooper of the Monterey Select Board and it's now 6:05. According to my computer, I'd like to bring to order the Select Board meeting at Monterey Mass. Here with me is Frank Abbott and Justin Maycock is absent this evening due to a family emergency. All right, first order of business is appropriation transfer requests of which there are a bunch which Roger will brief us on shortly.
Phew, where?
You're on Roger, appropriation transfer requests.
Yes, I have two here. They are covering some compensation. One is for fire department compensation and it's transferring over $6,500, increased calls over the past months. And they've fallen in the negative, so they're actually negative right now. This will cover what they are in the negative and then this last week of fiscal year.
Can you say it's being driven by the number of calls?
Yeah, the number of calls has kind of pushed it up a bit, so.
You guys didn't talk about any of that today?
Uh, no. So that was that. And then I also have another one for the police department. The primarily for Officer Brown, her line item only had $760 in it. And she makes a little bit more than that in the course of a week. And so I just transferred 1,000 from there.
Was there an improper comp, I guess it's the end of the year?
It's the end of the year, you know, they start doing some, a little bit more stuff. We might not have gotten back the, she made, I think, I can't remember how it works when she does details for the town too. So there's no, she may have done a little bit extra work there and also.
Shouldn't that come out of the part time though?
Well, I'm moving this actually from part time.
I know you're moving it from part time to full time, but if a full time officer is doing detail work, shouldn't that come out of part time? Because that's extra, that's not their salary. You might want to talk to Brian and because that seems to me like something.
I'd also know that.
I don't know, at the end of the day, it's coming from the police pool and whatever. But as a matter of like, a matter of accounting, it would seem to me that if they're acting as a, if they're acting as additional hours past their salary, that shouldn't come out of the full time line.
Isn't that a separate line?
That sort of, but there's a separate line for part time, but there's not a separate line for full time doing something part timers usually do.
Like a detail.
Yeah.
So I know she's done some.
Have to take notes. What else?
That was it, there's, there's, there are a few that are just reserve fund transfers. That just has to go through the Finance Committee and they have signed off on those and they also signed off on.
Don't we, I think we both have to sign off on it.
Only, only on the appropriations one, not the reserve fund transfer. So.
All right, so those are all done.
Those are all taken care of, yep.
All right. Thanks for doing a good job of clearing up the finances for the end of the year.
Almost like you carried away.
I'm trying not to, okay. Well, yeah, it ain't, it ain't our fault, it's over and since I'm one of the narrative wells. The Sandusfield Road Concom enforcement order wetland scientist proposal.
So I went to the Concom, Justin came, Jim was there, Mickey was there also. And we, I basically told them what our conversation was here and that the board was a little uncomfortable or unsure of why the Conservation Commission outside of the commission itself made this decision, effectively causing us or a potential other person to have to engage somebody for, you know, $3,800 and everything. You know, they, they had some, they kind of understood that, you know, I think it's the process itself. I'm not fully sure of how the process works, but my limited conversations with Kim are basically that any Concom member can, can go out and do enforcement order and things just have to stop.
Oh really?
That's what I understand, that's what she, she told me once before, so, yeah. And so effectively we've agreed to move forward, but because of the, because we came to the meeting without the signed contract of engagement from Emily Stockman, they've sort of pushed off the dates a little bit. If they, we'll have to get some new dates from them because the emergency order actually had the 20th and the 27th of June as dates in them. And the 20th was blown anyway because of a holiday, kind of messed up the schedule.
But we're still follow basically the June 19th letter from the Stockman Association, that's going to cost us?
Yep, yep, we're just waiting to hear from the, from the Conservation Commission again. So that's kind of where we're moving forward with that, we are.
Is there any reason not to go ahead and sign the contract with her even though we don't have a date certain? Wouldn't it be more expedient to just do that?
There's no reason to not sign it.
All right, do we have it?
I don't have it right in front of me here.
I presume you should just go ahead. I mean, I hate to do it without Justin since he was the one with the reservation, but I'd like to see it done.
We're having a meeting next week, we could do it next week.
I just, I'm a little confused. Now, I know that, what's her name, Nicole, was supposed to meet with.
Noel.
Noel.
Yeah.
And one of those.
Yeah.
It's a nickname. Was supposed to meet with Jim the next morning.
She did.
And there was talk about not enforcing this part where you had to have the wetland scientist. And I thought that was sort of like left in the air until the next meeting or something?
No, I think, I think it was, there was more there, having a conversation about how, how to get, I don't want to say get around, but how not to use in general, but maybe it was a little too, a little too, I don't want to say too much. But they, they, they really had a conversation, I don't think that conversation pertained to us as far as I, as far as I gathered from it. They were still going to move forward with the concert, with the consultant, but that there was just sort of this conversation.
Not going to.
Yeah, there was this conversation about.
Well, that you didn't have to, the thing was, they had to do the enforcement order, that was like by law, but they didn't have to insist on having a wetland scientist. That was what I got out of it.
I think that, I wasn't quite certain of all that as well. It wasn't all up in the air, so that's why I was waiting to get the next enforcement order and see what came of that. Because they were talking about changing the dates on that, so I wasn't.
Because they had in the contract, there's senior scientists and field technicians.
Yeah, the emergency order, right?
Yeah.
But that was the original one?
That's the original.
Yeah, so I, I sort of thought they were, and Michael Germain was especially leading that way and.
Don was, yeah, so I mean, they, they seemed to be more on the boat of less enforcement, I guess, or not less enforcement, but less stringent.
You know, just, yes, and just say, this is what you need to do, and they talked about the fact that, you know, why did it happen and, you know, so we don't want to run the flood.
I think, I think our whole, I think the issue with the, with this situation is that, who it happened in front of. And the DEP was actually there.
Yeah, but that, I mean, that.
And so that, that kind of is a little bit of leverage that we're trying to work with.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah.
So we might find differently next week or something.
Maybe, yeah, yeah.
I, I mean, it's unclear to me exactly how futile the wetland scientist is going to be. I mean, whatever damage occurred already occurred. And what we're really talking about is how to do our best to rectify the site. And I mean, the wetland scientist, it probably won't be providing the plan for how to avoid it in the future, that's a whole different thing.
Right, yeah.
And how much rectification there has to be or what's required. I mean, this personally, it seems like ridiculous culvert hill for one culvert, but.
And, and it's, it has to be cleaned out, the culvert has to be cleaned out.
Well, it's a question of how one cleans it out and the level.
And they cannot be cleaned out by hand, you would have to do it with a machine.
Well, some of them can be cleaned out by hand, normally they do, from my understanding. They clean them out with rakes and chainsaws and things like that, but this one had.
Something about a magnitude return in it.
It had a turn in it, but it also had a, a big pile of brush that had built up over time. And they went down in there, basically cleaned that up. And so it was, it was something that they don't normally do and you got stuck, so that's basically what happened.
It was unfortunate, and I guess at the end of the day, the question is both how to fix whatever happened and how, I mean, I think there's more clarity on how to prevent it happening in the future than, than exactly what.
Because I did have a conversation with Jim today and he said the beavers are back and they've actually just put more stuff down in the culvert. I was going to drive down there tonight from where I used to sit.
Which culvert, the one in Sandusfield?
It's on Sandusfield Road, just, just before.
But their beavers are back there, didn't need to give someone the health department, let them trap some of them?
No, that was up on Brett Road. I was, I asked him the same thing and he said, oh, that was on Brett Road, so yeah, because there's, there's a, there's a beaver pond back up in there somewhere behind the Allen, Karen Allen's property there. And so I guess they're coming down from there, so he said, yeah, there was stuff in, there was stuff in the culvert.
So do they, are they, is he now thinking maybe trying to get a second beaver receiver or use the one he just got?
He can't use the beaver receiver there.
Oh, because of the site?
There's no water, beaver receivers are usually at ponds. Yeah.
What's a beaver receiver?
It's basically, from my understanding, it's a, it's a cage that sits out inside the, like in a pond and then runs to, runs to a culvert through a pipe. So the beavers hear the trinkling of the water at this location and it's got like, the ones I've seen, they have a pretty thick cage. And so they, they try and kind of dam that up, but it just, it's easier to, to clean it and it pools them and it's like a pond leveler and so.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, so you can only really use those, and my talk, and talking to Jim, you can only really use those where ponds are. The only other option you have is to put it like on it.
But then you gotta, then you gotta clean it? The difference is how far it's up that maybe if it does get past the great houses, that's going to be haunted if it get out, yeah.
So.
If I'm understanding you correctly, Roger, we are, the likelihood that you do need to hire the scientist, we won't be sure until the Concom meets again and issues its new order with its new dates.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Hold on a second, why is there a?
Do like they didn't continue this. That came to me, I wanted to see what happened, it's like, it's like a soap opera.
It is.
Yeah, it's just, it's just unfortunate where it happened.
Yeah. So basically, we have to wait until they need and issue a new order and then we can act on it.
Yeah, that's probably a better idea.
And the second piece of that is that we are trying to figure out how to proceed with a bundled NOI.
Yes.
Presumably one for the stream crossings and one for the non-stream crossing culverts.
Yeah, yeah.
Or do you not, like a both?
I, I think, I don't, that, that I'm not certain of, I've heard from Kim. And there's still maybe an issue with stream crossings in a resource area. And what that means, I'm, I'm not fully certain of, other than you can't do a lot of stuff in a resource area. And so there may be, we have to figure out something because we have, we have too many of them to wait for them to be to the brink of fail, failure before we go, which from, you know, Kim would be better to answer it, but we can't wait until something is about to fail, you know, the road's about to fail or overflow before we go there in an emergency. So we have to do something.
That was a suggestion, I couldn't believe that.
Yeah, that's kind of what we were told.
It's ridiculous.
Cola's about to flood, that is.
Yes, let's, let's cause a problem to solve a problem.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'd have to figure that out, but I think, you know, it's best to just have a, kind of sort of see what we do with this emergency order. I know that in talking to Kim, that Richmond is kind of in the same situation as us and they're working on a blanket notice of intent, a bundled notice of intent. But I don't know if it necessarily covers the culverts in, or the stream crossings in the resource area, the culvert stream crossings. So that may be something we have to deal with separately, but I did talk to.
So it isn't that it's a stream crossing versus just a culvert? It's whether that, what either one occurs in a resource area?
It's my understanding, yeah, I guess so, yeah. I, I don't know if a cul, just a plain culvert can, I guess it could be in a resource area. On the other side of it, there's a, there's a wetlands on the other side of that culvert.
I mean, you get intermittent flow if there's water running in a storm.
Yeah, I know that some of the, some of the stream crossings, and again, talking to Jim, I mean, he's, he's seen fish swimming in them and things like that, so, little tiny fish.
That sounds like a stream crossing.
Yeah, I know, yeah, so it's a, it's a whole, it's a weird world, so I'm trying to figure it all out. Again, I think Kim is the one to keep, you know, to talk to about that, but Richmond again is dealing with it. I figured we would wait for them to get done with their process and see what theirs, what their bundled NOI is about. Emily Stockman, in conversations with her, has, you know, said that we may be able to do some things specific to stream crossings in a bundled, bundled aspect, but I'm not fully, fully certain, I guess it's to wait for her to be done.
So does Emily offer the service of working on NOIs? I mean, I.
I, I think she can, but.
Someone from Forsyte that's doing it for Richmond, right?
Yeah, I'm sure she can, yeah, yeah, we would probably be best to find someone.
Is she from Forsyte? No, she's a separate.
She's separate, yeah, she's up in North Adams.
I mean, not that I wouldn't rather do them in-house, but I'd rather just, yeah, I'd rather. Okay. I mean, I, I appreciated, did you see the emails from Mike?
Yeah, they're gone.
And I, and I guess Dawn, I appreciated the, his willingness to try to do that. I, I understand that Pauline is concerned that there could be a conflict of interest if members of the Concom have helped prepare it. But I also feel as though the people that are going to take, I mean, the choices have a volunteer that's willing to learn enough to properly prepare it. And the Concom's going through all this training to understand it versus having to pay thousands of dollars to have a professional do the same thing. And I, I don't know, I wonder where you tread that line and I guess, I feel like Mike and/or Dawn, maybe we need to ask them to call the legal conflict of interest hotline to discuss with a lawyer on duty and see if they can get help in sorting that. Because like, who else is going to volunteer to do that? There's so much training involved. And they already have to get the training because they're sitting on the Concom.
Yep.
And I, I see, you know, Kim's issue and, and Pauline's issue, but I, I also see that we're talking of probably, at the end of the day, tens of thousands of dollars. And I, it's hard to conscience that on permission to clean out a culvert.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of things we could be spending 10 or 20 grand on and that's not one I'd love to have to spend it on if I can't afford it. And not that I don't want everything done correctly, I do, but.
Yep.
Okay. Can we beat that dead horse?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
We beat it with the beavers.
The beavers feed us, I think.
The beavers feed us. I'm sure they'll watch it on YouTube.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry, since I'm going to have to write notes on this. Next item up is the treasurer contract renewal.
He did not have it ready.
Okay, so that's treasurer. All right. Inspector wires alternate James Kern.
Yes, I guess in my conversation, because Justin did talk to me a little bit. Basically, building inspector and inspector of wires are just looking for alternates in case that something happens. So I'm trying to get a couple of them here and there, and James Kern just needs to be appointed, so you know, so make a motion.
I move that we appoint James Kern to be the alternate inspector of wires, or if you prefer, inspector of wires comma alternate.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, town administrator update.
The only thing I have is I, you had spoken about this last week and I think you've, I think you voted in favor of it, was the, was ambulance.
The ambulance contract, I thought.
We did, we, we agreed there was one change that needed to be made on the amount.
There were, there were two changes that we made, that I made, I actually spoke with Kevin Wall and I sent this to him. He was actually thinking the exact same thing and had actually done it, Justin reached out to him and he emailed back and was like, I was doing the exact same thing. So the only thing that was updated from what you saw last of this is that the very first sentence, it had said August, it should be July, which is whether it starts in August or.
Right.
It's okay to do the contract right now.
Yeah, I mean, we're on three days into July, yeah.
And then I, I changed that, there was that one item in compensation where it was the wrong dollar.
Right.
Wrong number, so I put the $70,122 in there and then wrote out the sum of $70,122 and then parentheses changed that. So because I wasn't certain if Justin was going to recuse himself on this anyway, I think he was just to be safe.
I believe he did last week, so I assume he would have again this week.
Yeah, because I know he said it was his mother-in-law, he's not yet, he does not yet have a mother-in-law legally, but that's just the way it is. So on this page here is where he was signing.
Just doing a little checking, July 1st, 2024 to June 30, 2025, the correct amount, the correct amount, the correct dates. Invoice dates updated. And I think everything else was the same. No problemo. And I don't think we have to vote again because we already voted last week, so.
We voted, I think you voted like, yes, we just have to fix those.
Yeah, yes, as Mendit, right, yeah.
Yeah. The only couple of things I have, just as mentioning, I did get the latest Police Management Recycle America contract.
Okay.
The, I actually sent it because it's the first time I've ever seen it.
Right.
I sent it to, to Donna Brewer, I did get something back from Scott Brown, I think, is that, is that who his name is?
Chris Brown.
Chris Brown.
Chris.
He looked at it, he had some comments, I'm going to forward those comments back to, I think his name's Michael Moore who sent me this and see what he says and go from there.
Yeah, I can tell you what he's going to say, but anyway, go ahead.
Who said what?
It's WM Recycle America, it's Waste Management.
So here's the thing, we can't change the contract.
I'm sure.
I mean, no, full stop, right, this was our, they, they were in contract negotiations for months, right? This is a, we voted up or we voted down?
Is this from your, that group that you, it is, okay, I get you.
Yes. Yes. So this is a, like, it was a very lengthy thing, there's, a minor change is a stupid ass, it's not going to happen. Unless there's an error.
Yep.
We either accept it or we don't accept it.
I may just send it to him anyway and see if there's answers, because a lot of it is like, well, where to find this, where does this come from?
Okay, well, that's different, all right, that, that's fair.
So it didn't sound like there was like any gross issues, I think it was more like questioning where some of the language in this came from.
Come from, that's fair, that's fair, and good for him for finding it.
But is this with our township or multiple townships?
Multiple townships, all of the towns that are part of this compound to take our recyclables to facility, that's the municipal recycling facility in Springfield. The MRF is brought in by Waste Management. And it's a complex contract that involves a certain amount of tonnage that we're agreeing to provide and a certain rate. And there's like, it's complicated too by the fact that we get money back from that contract. So the, the, and you know, at one point, I could have told you exactly how it worked, but that was like too much ago. So now I had to go back and look at my notes.
It came with the report and I was looking through the report, but.
It's really complicated, so like the whole thing, like.
Where is green with it?
Yeah, but it's really complicated and it has to do with, there's like, there's a variation in how much they get per ton for each material. And how much we get back is a function of that, and there's all these trade-offs because it's a five-year contract between the rates at which things go up and they did, I think they did a very good job of trying to get the best compromise they could. At the end of the day, we, we get money back from this. As long as we produce enough recyclables, I think our town is certainly doing a pretty good job of it. I, you know, ironically, from an environmental standpoint, I'd like to see if there was less plastic in the waste stream, there would be less recyclables, but there would also be less plastic in the waste stream, which would be better in every possible way. But we should be reusing things more than recycling them, but it's, that's a thing that we can't control.
Well, the, the rate did go up, I think it was like, I was looking at that report and I saw this, I thought I saw like $80.33 that came back to us, it's like.
It's not a lot.
No, it was something, the, the rate went up to $92, so whatever the rate, I think that might be the rate per ton.
So the ton, the tonnage amount goes up and down with each of the different ones. And then on top of that, there was like, there was a really huge dip in the recyclables market, starting during COVID and it's starting, it started to creep back up again slowly, but that affects everything. So our time, like, part of the contract negotiation was that the total tonnage that all of the towns were delivering was under the contracted number of tons. And, and on top of that, the market rates would help.
So that's what, so I was, I got that back, I'm just going to reply back, just asking some questions of it. The other thing I have is, and I don't remember is if it's the Select Board that votes on this or the section.
No, because it's five years, we have to take it to town meetings, so we'll have to put it on the November agenda.
Oh, this we will, okay.
I already asked Dawn about that.
So.
And I don't, yeah.
Because this is only a period of one year.
What? The, the years.
This might just be our.
Um, then I'm not sure what this is. The new contract's a five-year contract.
Yeah, that's what came, it came yesterday and.
I did not see this one.
It came, it hit me yesterday and I, it came with the whole report.
The weird part is that we're currently subject to a five-year contract that's up next year. So.
Are they just trying to get a rate increase revision?
They, I don't know.
Oh, you don't ask.
Because there are increases built into the five-year contract.
Yeah, but he said it went from $80 to $90 or something?
Right, but there's a, there's a stipulated change, there's stipulated build-ins to the contract because you don't get another contract for that.
I know, but if it's above what they, it's in the other.
I'll, I'll ask, I'll, I'll be there, I'll ask.
Yeah, that's a big deal. And I, I'll also, I did not get this.
Okay, you had, you gave me.
It just came to you, if you do me the favor of forwarding that to me, I'm going to send it out to the, a couple of MAP people and ask them what they think is up with that. Because I know that, that they've been working on the five-year contract and, and they're aware that a bunch of towns have to approve it.
Yeah. I'll, I'll reach back out to him and.
Was it just you or was there a big list of others?
Ah, I don't recall.
Okay.
I don't recall.
When you forward it to me, have a careful look at that because I am curious whether this is us specific or something else, is that it work?
Okay.
Okay?
And then just a question I have about mileage. Right now we're paying $0.65 per mileage, the feds went up to 67 in January, did we, did you guys just vote on that? Or did you make that decision? I can't, I couldn't remember.
I have no clue, it's first time I've heard of all the ones.
It's the first time it's come up, how many people are getting records from that?
There's, there's a few of them, like Don Clausen, Don Torrico, that's the two that come to mind, I don't know if Catherine, Catherine Roberts might on occasion. That's the only ones that come to mind, it's not a ton of people, but I was asked, so. But I just, I just didn't know if that was something that.
I think it's in the personnel manual, but I don't know if the rate's in the personnel manual.
Yeah.
Or let's have a quick look.
Would the treasurer be able to answer that question?
She goes by what we tell her. She looks at, she looks at our policy, personnel policies and whether those things change or not. Because I mean, I think it says that we go by the federal rate, but I don't remember how. I couldn't figure out how it changes if the select board votes on it or, you know, it does it on a, we have to wait until the fiscal year changes and then just accept it. But most people, those people that have, the person that asked me has a line item. Or travel or something.
Sorry, trying to find it.
Here, how are you?
Hi.
Hello.
It's a good question, I'm gonna, let me, let me research what is in the.
Yeah, I just, I just couldn't remember if we could just, if, you know, the select board just agrees on it or it just happens naturally or.
So ours is currently how much?
Sixty-five and a half cents, sixty-five point five.
And Fed's just went up to.
In January, went up to sixty-seven.
I could see that changing with the fiscal year cost of the budget.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what I was talking to somebody and they mentioned that, but I just didn't know the mechanism.
It seems likely, but I'm not sure. You know, so it's like six cents behind.
Yeah, yeah, I just, like I said, I wasn't certain about the process to do it.
Yep, going back to the contract thing again, did you already send it to the Waste Management person?
No, no, I sent it to, I sent it to what?
So, right, when you, if you're going up forward coming to Waste Management, also requires why this is a one-year contract when the MAP is in process of negotiating a five-year contract? Because that's very odd. Okay, I'm gonna leave this up and we'll do. Do you have more?
No, that's it.
Nope. Hey, how are you, Mr. Ratack?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm, I'm good.
Well, I mean, I'm well.
Yes.
I try to be good, but it doesn't always work out.
That is a very good point, I suppose I should say I'm also well and I'm not sure about good right this minute.
You so bad?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Go get on that.
Getting on that, yeah, anyway. You are here to talk to us about the Renewable Energy Working Group.
Solar.
Solar RFP.
Closed landfill RFP, I'm here to answer questions if you have any. We're hoping for a vote of the select board to, you know, approve the RFP which has been tweaked on response to comments by town council, not herself, but someone who works in her office named Jenny.
Jenny.
Our consultant, Beth Greenblatt Beacon, has had an exchange of emails with Jenny highlighted certain text and I spoke at length with Beth yesterday. And she provided that summary that I sent to select board members. And she also sent me an email this morning from Jenny asking that they have a conversation today at Warren, which I assume they did because Beth said that she would be in touch with me if there was anything unexpected or new or different in that conversation, apparently not, I haven't heard back from her.
So do we have the latest version of that contract?
I think I.
I worried, yeah, I don't know. We should have a highlighted version.
I printed it out last week.
That.
When was that, was that the same one from last week? That's why I'm asking.
Last Monday, I think we got it.
Last week, did it get sent out last week?
I think so.
Yeah, so I think it went to the select board like last Monday or Tuesday.
This past month, like I have something from him yesterday.
Yeah, but that was probably the due thing.
That's the summary.
The summary, the consultant. Yeah, what did they say about on that contract, I noticed that part about National Grid would have abilities, am I reading that right, to turn it on and off because of the load on the infrastructure?
National Grid, the the condition of the substation, Risingdale Sub, or Rising Substation, which is our feed, is so saturated that National Grid will not allow a new solar installation, solar development at scale, in other words, commercial or municipal scale, not residential, on this circuit for this foreseeable future without any developer who wants to install a new field on this grid agreeing to certain conditions which have to do, if I understand it correctly, is complicated, have to do with technologies that National Grid will make available to the developer in order to test the viability of accepting independently generated power at scale on this circuit by some technical means that would sidestep what National Grid has determined is a fifty-five million dollar upgrade of this circuit. In other words, running new wires to increase capacity, but apparently they have some other technical capabilities that they would like to test in coordination with any developer that they agree can, you know, set up a new field. So developers considering this will have to agree to certain restrictions on their ability to sell power under certain circumstances.
How, how much, how likely is that to impede our ability to attract an investor?
Well, our consultant's opinion, again, if I'm correct, and these are complicated matters that she speaks of so fluently that she loses me in the second or third sentence.
I understand that problem.
Developers are faced in this, on this circuit with either choosing, okay, it's off limits, you can't do anything here, or you can do something here, but you have to do it on our terms. And you have to become, you know, the carrot, that's the stick, the carrot is you'll be on the ground floor of this technology, so you'll be generating power and selling power where other people who don't agree to this won't even have a foot in the door.
So she thinks it's possible, so?
She thinks it's the best prospect in the circumstances. If if we didn't have upstream of us, very large solar field across from Bursheer School in Sheffield, two large solar fields in Mogarow, all commercial stuff, it'd be a different situation.
Are they facing the same limitations?
Well, they're on the same circuit.
Right, but they might have gotten onto the circuit before National Grid decided to do this.
Oh, yeah, they did, they did, that's a fact.
Right, so the newer people are gonna have significant financial.
We're, we're late to the game.
Yeah.
And we're paying the price.
So it may or may not be successful, but it won't be successful if we don't put it out, so.
Well, we have, we have the funds to hire the expertise to make a pitch and see if we can attract a developer.
Yep.
If we can, good, we've got some community kilowatts.
Yeah.
It's better than none.
Yeah. Agreed.
I can't remember the batteries, what size generation is part of the RFP having batteries as?
Because of the circumstances in this circuit battery storage may become even more important than it was before.
Yeah, because if you're generating during day and then at night you can put it back out, is that correct?
I think so.
Yeah, if you can't put it on the, on the grid, you could be building your batteries up and then when it goes dark, you're just taking draining your batteries back all you can.
It could be a benefit to this circuit to have a battery storage available at scale and as part of an, you know, independent generation facility.
I mean, that's the technology now is batteries as backup.
So I'm trying to remember, I thought we already agreed to this.
I don't know, so we talked about it last week.
Yeah, we did.
I can't say if we voted.
We didn't vote on it.
I made the motion that we take energy from middle groups, RFP and vote on it.
I will second, yeah, I will second that I approve it, I mean, I'm glad that they worked together to.
I think it was work well done.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Where you started and where you are now is pretty remarkable.
By the way, when I asked that question, I was not implying that we shouldn't try and go for it. I just was wondering how, how she felt it was going to impact the likelihood of our attracting someone. That doesn't stop you trying, I'm just curious what our odds are.
Sure.
But the downside is having someone turning power on and off. The other side is if you have batteries, you know, the battery costs have really dropped, you know. It's a huge business for Tesla now, they're doing over billions of dollars.
Does it fix the problem with the batteries catching on fire?
Well.
I mean, I don't want to be negative or anything, but that's a pretty serious problem.
Yeah, but that's a big.
Oh, no, there were ones in buildings too.
I got them in my basement, they haven't caught fire yet.
What was that sound though? Yeah.
Support the fire department, but.
Yeah, that's the scary thing, they're very, very hard to put out.
So you made the motion, you seconded it.
I seconded it, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's approval to proceed with.
Quite right, that's approval to proceed and we want to extend our thanks to you and your group for what you've done.
Great. Then the the schedule that she outlined in the summary that you got yesterday, with this approval that you just voted, which I suggested to Beth that I didn't want to go ahead without that vote, but she will, as she puts it, apply with the central register to publish our RFP tomorrow. So that, that sets the ball rolling.
Okay.
And then the schedule that she outlines, the RFP will be issued on July tenth and then a whole series of consequences follow from that. You know, she, she receives proposals, in theory, we hope, and then she informs them of certain circumstances and it starts the ball rolling.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Good.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work and, you know, it must feel like a big, big line has been, big pro has been achieved, we don't know yet if we'll get it, but, you know, someone fitting, but.
I don't know, it feels more like dinner's ready and I'm hungry.
What, just a question, what's, what's next for the Renewable Energy Working Group?
Looking at the RFPs, I guess.
Once you get past this, like what's, just a quick.
Yeah. I wrote a piece for the Myra News and we were, we were at our meeting earlier tonight, we were discussing ways, this is kind of, this step means that the ball is rolling and we'll, we'll be attending to that and responding to a situation. But what we really want to do, what we want to focus our energy on now is promoting residential solar, battery storage, electric vehicles, various green initiatives that individuals can take. This has been discussed in the group for a long time, but we were caught up in all this RFP mumbo jumbo for a long time and what we want to do is see if we can recruit moderate persons who would be part of a group that is not a municipal group that has to do open meeting, blah blah, and become what a nonprofit that's called Mass Energize helps communities develop what they term as coaches for people interested in putting panels on their roof that don't know what the game is or how to get in the game or whether they should get in the game or whether they should own or lease and all these significant questions. So we're trying to see if there's, there are people in town who want to be part of an informal group and become a resource for individuals in town to take steps on their own. So this would be a non-municipal effort. So that's, that's what we're turning our attention to in terms of initiative while we respond to developments on the municipal level.
I have one other question for you, Peter, because this one's bothered me for a while. With all the, there seems to be a disjunction to me between pushing for electric vehicles and being informed that the grid needs upgrading and it's probably not going to happen in the foreseeable future. Do we actually have the power supply to support everyone transitioning to electric vehicles, even if it were to a car?
I promise you, everyone is not about to get an electric vehicle.
That's not the point, the point is we're promoting the use of the technology, that I'm not sure we have the infrastructure to.
I think you have the infrastructure and habit of it, it's, you know, when you said that at your charging level, you know. First of all, most like the current Tesla batteries, they want you to charge it at a slower rate, up to eighty percent.
Like a triple?
Yeah, so you don't do it, so it varies among the manufacturers, so it's not like you open it up and you got, you know, you know, it's all, it's not, you know, it's not a huge amount, I mean, it's there. And if we're filling up the lines now, you know, the, you know, the grid is filled up now, you know, then I suspect you have enough, you know, to do it.
The grid, the grid is near full and, and I think my, my impression and from a year of communication with Beacon is that the grid is, grid is the utility, National Grid or Eversource, whichever utility is current in whatever town, they know what the problem is, they're doing their best to address the problem. There's, it won't be any restriction in this near saturated circuit on residential solar. Small scale, widespread, it's gonna happen and they're gonna adapt to it. It won't be, you know, it'll be, you know, possible, maybe not in every instance smooth, but just as an example, Michelle leased an electric car in December and we've had solar panels for a few years and typically, over the course of four years, we have generated, we got a five point nine DC kilowatt already based on our historical electrical use. And the electricity we've used since we've had our solar panel. And the electricity we've used since we've had our solar panels. Has been about twenty-four dollars a month. We've generated twenty-four dollars a month more than we've used.
Okay, gotcha.
We bought it, you know, Michelle has an electric car. Once, you know, she waited, she waited while all the Ts were crossed and Is were dotted. So that we could get a charging station at home. That was a process, took a couple of months. During which she, ah, am I going to run out? Am I going to get stranded on the highway? Because there are not very many charging stations around. Now that we have it at home, it's easy. She can charge. And now we're paying about twenty-four dollars a month. So there's a typical.
Forty-eight bucks a month.
That's not, that's not a big deal. We have a small array compared to a lot of residential solar arrays. We need more. We knew that when we get an electric car, we're going to need more if we don't want to pay. So we paid, you know, twenty-four bucks a month is not a lot of money to be able, never to go to the gas station.
Well, it's less than you'd be paying for gas, although I don't know how you incorporate the cost of the vehicle.
Yeah, we tried, we tried to figure it out once and.
It's hard. But I guess what I was really asking is that the saturation of the, of the grid has to do. Both with diffuse generation, but also the use on the grid. And the generation at the larger power plants. All of those things feature into the saturation of the grid. And I'm just, I'm essentially wondering if as a, as a group, as a whole, with all of the diffuse generators. And the power plants themselves, if we're actually producing a sufficient amount of electricity. For the wholesale conversion of vehicles from gas to solar. Because I don't know.
Simple answer is no, not yet. We got a big job ahead of us.
I know.
And we're doing it a step at a time and.
That's all we can do?
Here we are.
I know. But thank you. I mean, I think you know more about that than I did, so it was worth asking.
Well, yeah, this, this is all big picture stuff.
It is.
You know, we're trying to do small picture steps.
Thank you for coming and.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks for all the work you guys did.
Thank you for your authorization to keep moving.
Oh, heck yeah.
Okay, good night.
Good night. All right, you're done with your things. Do you have any unanticipated ideas?
On the firehouse lease. The lawyer incorporated the four things that I raised, gave you a sheet of paper on, into the contract. He had a couple few minor changes of the firehouse lease. You know, the liability insurance is more stated in it. I met with Dell the night. He's going to take it back to the committee. He, he only asked me to do is, does it have to be in the bed of the contract? Could it be in the tenment or could be the note of, note of, I said, look, I'll ask the lawyer.
I mean, I, does it matter if it's in?
He says it doesn't. He doesn't, you know, Dell said, you know, it doesn't matter to me, but if I get to the question, can it be? I said, look, I'll ask the question until my, whatever the lawyer advises me, that's what I'm going to do. The other thing we'll have to do, I have to get with you, Roger, I was reading a little bit over from Chris's note where we'll, you know, post that. That, what do they call it? The, you know, that we're not putting out for competitive bid.
Oh.
Okay. He's, Chris felt we should do it because if anybody ever raised questions, you know, we've. We, you know, we said we're not putting it out for bid. We said, here's how the money's going to be appropriated. You're just covering all your bases. It's, it's a matter of paperwork.
So are we saying we need to put that in the contract?
No, no, you do it separately through the Commonwealth.
Through the Commonwealth, okay. So.
I'm going to work on it and then I'll get it to Roger. He's given me a, I've only looked at it briefly, so I'll work on it in the next few days and then Roger and I can follow up on it next week. You cannot sign, that has to be posted for thirty days before you can sign the firehouse.
To no bid then?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I told Dell about it. It's, it's just a process. It's not, you know, you're still good in March. Whereas, you know, for the new first period of the new year, we'll be saying you on. So that's where we are. I felt like we made progress.
That's huge and I'm really glad to hear it and it's really positive and hopefully the committee will approve it. And can move on to the next thing. Is that the only one?
Yeah, that's the only thing.
Okay. I'm trying to think if I had any, so Roger found the updated foresight plan. For the Fox Hill Road property.
Oh, right. Okay, all right.
And I forwarded that to Margie so she could share it with the planning board.
Okay. Are you going to get CommCom to come and look at it and say what can you do? Not CommCom, the construct?
So I think that's the next step.
Yeah.
And I guess the question is, is it, I think, I'm trying to think through the process. Is this something the select board does? Can I, I'd like, can I just do that or like, do, are we doing it as a town? Does it have to be us? Does it have to be the planning board? I'm not sure what the procedure of that is.
I think we need to get more information, you know, like to me, the construct. First of all, I would go back and see, did we spend all the ARCA funds that we allocated for that?
I believe we did.
We did? Okay. So that's that. I would get that and then I construct. I would ask them, here's what we know. What do you, what do you see? And then maybe we should have a, you know, just have a discussion about it. Put it on the select board agenda and have people come in and talk about it.
And then maybe to have the planning board, someone from the plan board.
Or yeah, or joint meeting with them.
And I, I need to, I've never really focused on the subdivision rules that are the part of the zoning rules because it's never come up.
Well, there's, you have to have two hundred feet of, of front road.
Frontage?
Frontage, yeah.
There, there's other rules that could impact this effort as well, including driveways. Shared, like shared driveways, shared wells, shared septic, like all of the rules that concern that. And there's also the question of could the water system, would they be part of town water? Would the water system, can it, can it manage an additional load? There's a lot of questions, I think, that need answered. You know, but they have to be asked before they can be answered.
I have heard from somebody on the water committee. That the company cannot, does not have enough water to add anything anymore values to it.
I, I believe that's the case.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, you can ask them, but that's what I have heard.
Yeah.
On numerous occasions.
Right. And I, I think that it's, that's a problem that's soluble by sinking wells, but it just costs more money.
Yeah. That's what they have approached, finding how far they had to go for that.
But it's better than people.
They got tea, not water, you know?
It's tea, not water.
Deep in there.
That's hard.
So, yeah, but I, I, so I guess the next step is to, maybe I'll just call the people at Construct.
I think you can call and start it.
And ask them to come out and meet with me. And maybe Laura, Laura expressed the emphasis as well and Mancy and she from the plan board. And she's been up there and looked at it and maybe, maybe if someone from Construct could come out and meet with both of us. And we could just brainstorm a little about whether they'd be interested in what would be needed to proceed. That would be a place to start.
Yeah, I think so to get them to, I'm sure they know a lot of the rules, maybe not all the rules. But it's not their first time doing something like this. Too, and I do think we need to have a, a larger meeting in general, just to hear people. And, you know, work on a way that we organize the meeting, you know, with suggestions. You know, it's, and it's something we need to work on because it doesn't happen quickly and.
No. And, and you know, there's a question of, are the rules currently in, in the zoning ones that we could manage with? Or would we need an exemption from something?
I figured you're going to need exceptions from what I've seen.
Well, and I think there's also the possibility that we need to consider, like, the planning board is already contracted with BRPC. To come up with possibilities for alterations in the zoning that might allow for greater opportunities. And this might be a great sample case. What would be needed to make this happen? Might be something to think about when they're making those choices. So. Okay, so I will reach out to Lori, Laura. And to Construct and see if we can, and maybe you want to be there too. Okay. Also, as an aside, all right, related again, yet different topic. I had a long chat with Mari today. And one of the things she mentioned to me was in the recent going over the end of year stuff and the coming tax bills. She's a little concerned about the sheer number of LLCs. In, that are paying taxes as LLCs. Guess what those are? Oh, yes, they are. They are businesses that have bought properties, that have taken properties off the rolls. Of being people that participate in our town. And maybe the easiest first step at the STR thing is to not allow LLCs.
That's going to be a hard.
I don't think so. I think that one will be very easy, very easy. None of the people with LLCs are town residents. These are people who do not live here, do not have any active involvement, do not vote here. Who are buying properties to run as hotels in our town. Why do you think that will be hard? I think that's the easy, low hanging fruit. I don't think there will be opposition.
You know, I understand they don't have the road to, you know, they can't vote because they're not a resident here. But they can also have the right to buy stuff.
Yeah, they can buy it, but they can't run, they can't run an Airbnb? You can't do.
Well, the other way to get around it is tax the hell out of Airbnbs.
Well, we already, no, we already tax them at six percent and no amount of taxing is going to stop them from doing it. They're just going to pass the cost on to the renters. And a lot of towns that have made regulations have included, outlined, like Alfred doesn't allow. You have to be a residential homeowner. You have to live in the house part of the time, right? These are, that, that is not what the LLCs are about, right? There are a few LLCs that might be like families that have formed one because there's too many relatives that own it. But the majority of these are corporate LLCs running a hotel. And it's the low hanging fruit. I don't think there'd be much opposition at all. There may be opposition because they figure if, if we're doing that, there are other limitations we may want to do. And maybe we'll want to do it all at once. But I think it's something to consider because the longer we let it go on, the more of them there are going to be. And the more of them there are, the harder it is to make that change. But the more houses get taken off the market for this, the harder it is, the more our property values are affected.
Can she get official numbers or want that number?
I, I should, I will ask her. It didn't occur to me until after the conversation. It might be helpful to have that number. And there's no guarantee that anything that's an LLC is inherently an Airbnb, but it's easy enough to check if you have the addresses.
Well, yeah, yeah, it is. I mean, Margie's family had one set up an LLC, but they didn't rent it.
Right.
Just because there's so many owners.
Exactly. I mean, there's other reasons to do it and I think those existed, but the number, what she's saying is the number has significantly increased. And she's been doing this a while, so I feel like that's a real thing. I'm hoping to meet with Alex Glover maybe next week to talk about how it's been going in Alfred with their rules. I, everyone keeps saying there'll be opposition to it. I think there'll be less opposition than we think there will be. I think there will be, if we just said you can't do it at all, I think there would be opposition. If we say, if you have, if you are a homeowner and you're spending part of your time here and you're doing it to supplement your income, you can do it X number of days.
I think that's what Richmond just did and I have the Richmond paper, so I can, that'll, I can.
So Great Barrington does too, they love the number.
A lot of places, and, and the differences.
I think, I just remember eighty days and I think that was.
Yeah, I think Barrington's like a hundred and eighty, two hundred days. Like it's not really a limit, yeah. Barrington's the weakest by far and it was weakened by primarily by the real estate agents. Who claimed that there was no evidence that it affected the real estate market, which is completely absurd. But that's what they did and they lobbied for it and I like.
It affects the town. It just doesn't affect the real estate agent, you know, the.
The real estate agents want the property values high because they make a percentage.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I mean, it, it affects that maybe, but.
That whole, that whole real estate market's changing with that recent justice.
I missed this one.
Well, you're, you know, because I'm trying to sell my brother's house and I had a long conversation and it's like. If you, the buyer has to pay the commission. It's not the, not the seller paying commissions for both. The buyer has to pay, if you have a different real estate, has to pay that commission part.
Is that everywhere or just?
Everywhere, that's nationally. She was trying to explain it to me today. And it changes, I think she said.
It used to be both parties paid.
No, not necessarily. Like in a good market, the seller used to pay the commission, it'd be like three and a half percent. To the listing agent, three and a half percent, and they've limited the percentage. But now it's more of a cost on the buyer. So, you know.
Which is kind of ridiculous in a market like this where the sellers are getting such a ridiculous price to begin with. To ask the buyer to do it, it seems absurd.
Yeah, but it was kind of price fixing.
It was totally price fixing.
Price is price.
I mean, everybody just.
Seven percent, the housing, now some of the percentage dropped, but housing has gone up so much, you know, seven percent. They did that fifteen years ago. Local real estate goes up, you know, three or four percent every year. You know, they're making a healthy, you know.
Yeah.
I had no shit, no tears for him, believe me.
Oh, no, I don't feel bad that they cut the rate. I think it's unreasonable when the rates are that high to be asking the buyer to pay it. Rather than the seller, because the seller's the one making the windfall profit.
Yeah, but, yeah, but that, well, but the other thing is, if the buyer knows that. Then the real estate agent representing him should try to be getting the price down.
Down because we have to pay it down.
Yeah, and that's what capital was in market. It's like, oh shit, it's three and a half percent, you know, just hide here.
Anyway, I, I'm just saying, I think that, I think that Barrington's is a really weak one. They went for, let's just get them to register because then we know who they are.
Well, you could have told that, that wouldn't be rocket science.
No, and it, to me, it's not about who's doing it. It's about, at the end of the day, we need less of it. Because we need people living in our community, being part of our community, being part of our neighborhoods. It's important. And that's not going to happen if we're letting companies come in and run hotels.
Yeah, but you also see where in New York City restricted them so much. There, there's not many Airbnbs now and now hotel rates are way up.
Because they're, they're packed, I know.
Oh, yeah.
You know what, major cities all over the world are, are restricting them. It's not just New York City.
I know.
Because the housing markets are really, really tight and, I, I mean, I don't know. It's interesting in New York to me because you go there at night and all the windows are dark. All the windows are dark. There's maybe ten percent of windows that are lit. And that means all those apartments are empty. Who is living in those apartments? When I was a kid, it was not like that. You'd walk down the street and eighty percent of the people, the lights were on or more. I mean, you know, it's fair. Somebody went out to theater, somebody's out to dinner, whatever, but people were in their apartments. Now it's all dark. Because they're all owned by like, I don't know, corporations, people from overseas. I don't know. It's creepy.
Corporations have been buying housing and farming.
So anyway, I, I think that we should try and maybe it will fail, but I think that you don't get to yes when I'm asking.
I, I have no problem asking, you know.
I, I think that it can only improve our housing situation and. We have to try. Anyway, I, that's all I got. We have no minutes because Justin was doing the minutes and he hasn't gotten done yet and he's not here. So I guess we're done till next week.
So I'll make a motion then.
Yeah, do we have any, do we know of any? Yeah, do we have any, do we know of anything that's definitely on next week?
The Bylaw Committee.
Yeah, are, do we, are we giving them next week or did they just ask?
Yeah, I think it was sixteen, so.
Okay, so that will be next week. That'll force us to actually read through that in a witness document. They did a lot of work. It's, we need to do it. Did you have a question or are you just scratching?
No, I'm just scratching it. I'm getting off.
So, yeah, all right.
You're not doing minutes, but I'm gonna go home.
I don't believe.
Good to you, Mickey. Bye.
Well, it's very interesting to, not, nice interesting, but it's to find out about all these LLCs. That's disturbing. It's very disturbing, yeah. It's very disturbing. So I'm gonna ask, if I was gonna write an article about why moderation consider STR regulation, I think the LLCs is straightforward, but in general, what do you think would be the most moving for people who maybe like the idea of being able to rent out their place? Because there's a lot of people like, well, my neighbor really needs the income or whatever, which may be true.
You know, they're, they're probably a few of those and it's, you know, like the guy next door to me used to rent. He said he's not renting anymore. Just put it in a pool and pick a bowl of cord, though. But he said he's not gonna rent anymore. And it was never a problem. You know, once in a while, I, I would know they were there because they left, they always left their lights on at night outside because they were always afraid of the dark. And then, and then actually the people that own the house are extremely quiet and the lights are out very early. I think, I can hear, but the light's on. It's eight o'clock. But I think they go to the other side of the house and I don't see them. But they didn't do it because they needed the money. And that, and that's the thing. I think some of these people that are renting out houses aren't doing it because they need the money.
But they claim.
But they can get the money and, and so that's what they're doing because they need the money.
They may try and make it, so it's just a, rent it enough so you have some kind of financial offset to depreciation or show some revenue, you know, like it's breaking.
And then I can see if you're an older person and you, you have second home or maybe you're spending the winter in Florida or where, or, you know, Tucson or whatever.
You can get some rent during the winter, you know. The house next to my daughter used to be a person. Now the people that bought it, actually they lived like in Eggplant or something, Cheese in Richmond. And they, they had it rented this past winter to some traveling nurses. They made a mess.
And I, I mean, and, you know, I don't have a problem with people doing that, but I'd rather the traveling nurses aren't there for one week.
Right, right. It's, you know, in and out, in and out.
Yes, exactly.
You know, I, I did a lot of renting when I was opening up at once and they had it, two minimum. But if somebody came in for a weekend and nobody else was there for that, the rest of that time.
That was up to, they still pay for it.
Well, they weren't paying for that time. So they came in and they paid for three days, but
Right.
there wasn't, I mean, it wasn't that we were overloading the system, you know, by, by not having somebody in there.
So what do you think would sway people? What would get more people to be accepting of that type of regulation?
I don't know. You know, we, we just put in those, those little buildings now, but what do we call them?
Eighty years?
Yeah, yeah.
Necessary dwellings.
And I know like there's one up at the Ryder House, but they just put it for the family because, you know, she said.
What it was meant for.
You know, and, and, and that was fine. And you're supposed to have the owner in one of those buildings if they could be, got two buildings. I'd like to get some thought.
Do, and talk to people and let me know what you hear because I, I, I want to write something for the news to really try to get people to start thinking positively about it. But it's like, I know what convinced me, but often the things that work most on me aren't what work on other people, so.
Yeah, that's why I don't seem to be agreeing with everybody else. I don't know.
Well, that's a frequent occurrence for me, so. Thank you, Mickey.
Yeah, and I hope that we make some progress on the CommCom too.
We will, we will.
Don't worry.
I know we will.
So shall we adjourn at seven nineteen for your motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second, the meeting is, are you all on paper?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned at seven nineteen. I'll take the minutes. I was waiting the notes.